I'm just trying to get to a certain page. You ready, Matt?
I'm ready.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting in order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fountain?
Here.
Treasurer Horning?
Here.
Clerk Chofeu?
Here.
Trustee Collier?
Here.
Trustee Germaine?
Here.
Trustee Harper?
Here.
Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our agenda.
So moved. Support.
Would we like to pull off item 6I, was it?
We appoint 6I.
6I.
That's fine. And I'll support that amendment.
Me too.
And so we had a motion by trustee Clainey, second by trustee Harper. Any other discussion?
There was also an addition to the other consent agenda. I don't know if you want to do that now or when you do the consent agenda. The two more appointments that weren't finished yet.
Right. I could do that. You want to do it now?
Either way. Since we pulled the other one from consent.
Yeah, but we'll pull it.
6L.
Okay.
So add that. Where did you can start that at?
That would be 6G. That's.
6G gets moved off from there as well.
Well, I was, no, I was leaving a consent agenda, just adding that make sure the board got the memo on who the two appointees are.
You did not.
Okay, you did not. So we are recommending.
On the accountants or?
Michelle LaRose to Planning Commission and Jim Bun to the alternate ZBA.
Okay.
And Larry Fox and I did the interviews with those folks over the last two days.
I have no problem with that.
I support that.
Okay. Anything else? Being non-holds and papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Call to the public. This is call to the public, not, doesn't have anything to do with the liquor public hearing later. So if you have something not with that and you'd like to call to the call to the public, please come forward. Being non, we'll move on to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Petrucci, second by treasurer Horning. Any discussion? Being non, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number seven is a public hearing. This is for liquor license application number 19-001. The applicant is Two Guys Sushi. So just to give everybody just a quick background of what this is, the state of Michigan allows townships to get a liquor license for every 1,500 residents. And at the last census in 2010, I believe we received three of them. There was one remaining. And the part of the process is we opened it up for applicants. I believe it was in May of this year through the month of August. We did have one applicant that came forward that met all the criteria. Then it goes to a, we have a committee of the board, and we reviewed that. And after we had made a decision, we found some additional information. So we opened it back up just for that. Two Guys Sushi. And we make a, made a recommendation to go forward with that. It then gets reviewed by the township planner, the planner, goes through the criteria. And this is all based on the Heartland Township ordinance. We are in the next process this evening, which is a public hearing. We follow in this public hearing. We may or may not act on it this evening. That's up to the board's discretion. So after it goes through this process, if it goes through, they still have to go through the state of Michigan because the state of Michigan controls, the Liquor Control Commission is under the state. So it's a little bit different. It's kind of antiquated, but we have had this for a while and we opened it up. And that being said, if you'd like to have a comment this evening, there's a lot of people here. So if you have some comments, if you could come up to the podium here, state your name and address.
I think you need to open the public.
And yeah, well, so if there's, did I miss anything on that?
Yes, you need to open.
Other than open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, so entertain a motion.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Support.
Have a motion and support. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. So anybody that would like to come forward, feel free. Just raise your hand and I'll.
Don't be fast forward.
Well, I'm surprised that, no, go ahead. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Joe Torrance. I live on Blueberry Hill here in Hall, Heartland. Primary applicant for this liquor license. I just want to reiterate to the board how good we think it is, not only for us, but for the township of Heartland. We are, I am, a 20-year resident of Heartland. I chose Heartland. I chose Heartland to raise my family, send to schools, to live here. I think one of the things that we lack as a community is a restaurant base. I think that we now recognize that sushi is one of the fastest-growing food segments. I think we have one of the most unique concepts. We can find nothing like it anywhere else in the country. We have world-class sports memorabilia, many items worthy of the Hall of Fame. We have a plan, a business plan, that's sustainable and good for Heartland. We have local community support, which has been actually overwhelming. The residents that we've talked to and the people we've spoken to are behind us 100%. We've got extremely strong financial backing, and we're really looking forward to conducting business here in Heartland Township. We feel that we're good citizens. We plan to be good corporate citizens. And we look forward to a long and prosperous relationship with the township of Heartland. And thanks for this opportunity. You know, it's been long and arduous, I think. And it's been educational. It's been frustrating. And hopefully it'll be very rewarding after you make your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Joe Aywood here. I live over on Bergen Road. Just moved here back in February, but wanted to kind of get myself in with how everything goes. I'm here to show support for Joe here and his new business. Look forward to seeing it come alive.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Torrance. I also live at 9159 Blueberry Hill. I'm Joe Torrance's son. I would just like to point out, we've had a tremendous social media outpouring of support for Hattorando Sushi. We've had posts get shared over 100 times with a lot of comments vocalizing support for Hattorando to be able to receive this liquor license. And I hope the board is able to vote in line with the will of the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, my name's David McGregor. I live down the road in San Marino. I just wanted to come because I would, I like the idea of more independent businesses, more independent restaurants. If we just go down M59, everything's a chain restaurant. And it would be nice to have the option for something owned by somebody who actually lives in the community and not have to drive to Brighton to get good sushi. So that's basically my point. So thanks for having us.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? I don't see anybody rushing up. Entertain a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Public hearing.
Support.
Motion by trustee Harper, second by trustee Germaine. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. At this point, if somebody wants to entertain a motion for the resolution, I'll open it up to the floor if there's any comments from the board.
I move to approve the local approval resolution for the new quota Class C liquor license for Two Guys Sushi LLC.
Support.
Motion by trustee Clainey, second by trustee Harper. Is there any discussion? Being non, have the clerk please call the roll.
Hi. Before we go on, I'd like to say a few things. I'm not, I've gone through the business plan. I have some questions. I don't think they're major. I have some issues with computations of salaries and things like that, but overall, the percentages fall in line with normal restaurants as far as percentage that goes to salary, percentage that goes to cost of goods sold, that type of thing. So again, I don't have any real problems with the restaurant itself. I have a concern more of the overall Heartland community and looking at developing brick-and-mortar businesses in the township. We have several commercial developments that are still in the process of developing things. I think if we use this particular liquor license as a incentive to bring in someone that's going to actually build a brick-and-mortar building, which would make me feel a little more comfortable on a longevity-type issue, is what I'm, what I would like to do with this liquor license. I have nothing against the restaurant. I have nothing against the concept. I have some very positive things in your business plan, the whole issue of working with the community. I owned a restaurant in the community for 16 years, and I thought dealing with the community was the biggest thing we did in the right way. And I saw that in your business plan, and I truly like that. However, I'd just like to save this particular liquor license for a brick-and-mortar building.
There's, they called the, there's no open discussion. Board has the ability to say whatever they wish.
I'd like to comment if I could. It seems that local governments always want the big national players, the guys that put up the brick-and-mortar and everything and have all the money. They want them to come into their townships. And they kind of wait for them. And we've been waiting for almost seven, eight years now. And not one of the national chains has come in to put up a building. But I think we need to also support the small guy, the independent, the guy that lives in our township. I know that when Heartland Pizza was up, a lot of people went to Heartland Pizza because it was a local restaurant owned by local people that had a good product. And, you know, you have to start somewhere. And we can talk about putting up a brick-and-mortar building and having that part of the whole project. But we also have a shopping center that has two empty, empty spaces there that are going to be filled and make that shopping center more profitable for that owner. So we have to look at that as well. And I think that sushi in Heartland, I'm not a big sushi connoisseur. I don't know much about it. I've eaten it a couple of times. But I have a lot of friends who have. And they tell me that the best sushi place is in Brighton. It's called Zen. And I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I hear. I hear from a lot of people. I think Heartland Township is the kind of community that would support a sushi bar. And to make it even more interesting, this is going to be a sports sushi bar that I've never even heard of. I've never even seen one. So that concept is a new concept. And it wasn't long ago where we had another developer put a restaurant in Heartland that decided to sell his customers raw meat and a hard rock, or a hot rock. And that restaurant has now bloomed everywhere in Michigan and even in the Midwest of the United States. And it all started right here in Little Heartland. So now that we have a new concept of a sushi owned by independent people who have the financial backing that they need to get into this restaurant, I think it's time that communities like Heartland support those people. So I'm in favor of this. I want to see it happen. And I hope that my fellow board members will also see that as well.
Thank you.
The reason why I support this is for a number of reasons. I sit on the Planning Commission, and I see a number of opportunities come through and not necessarily come through to fruition. What I find great about this particular opportunity for the township, I truly think it's an opportunity for the township, is that it's a unique business and unique to our community. And, you know, diversification of what we have to offer to our citizens and people that come through our township, I think is very important. I think as a planning commissioner, we talk about sense of place. We talk about the changes. Some people don't like it, what's going on in Heartland. Some people love it. But the sense of place is we provide a sense of community. We're hoping to provide walkable community. But more importantly, we want to provide our community with opportunities to, of different commercial establishments. And I think this is, this is what really sold me on this, is the fact that I do eat sushi and I enjoy sushi, but that it's a unique opportunity for our community. I think also the fact that when we look at our, look at these issues, we also look at our ordinance, and we look at what the information that's provided to us. I want to commend the staff for putting the information together so that we could all review that because that is an important aspect of this. The applicant has to provide a significant amount of information to the township because of this particular, it's an important issue for the township, whether to authorize the issuance of a liquor license. And I will tell you that those kinds of things do take time. And that's just the nature of it. So with that, I don't have anything further, but I do support this applicant's, obviously, because I moved to approve the resolution, so.
Thank you. Any other board members? Do you have any comments?
I would like James to comment on the process that the state has established for the township to receive additional liquor licenses in the future.
Yes. As Supervisor Fountain mentioned, we would get another license if we grew by 1,500. As it turns out, the 2010 census, we were just under 15,000 residents. We fully expect, and by all estimates by SEMCOG and actual census estimates now, we're over 15,000 residents now, which if confirmed by the 2020 census, would mean we would get one more license probably in late '21 or early '22, when those results come and the Liquor Control Commission processes it all. So as the boards discuss, we're expecting to get another license in the next couple of years.
And then also, if the township were not to approve this, then the business has the opportunity to purchase liquor licenses on open market. Isn't that true?
Yes. In fact, a number of our businesses, BlackRock included, received, got their licenses from other places and transferred them in here. And the board has a say in that. And you've always approved those transfers in from other communities. In those cases, they're owned by the last operating owner, and they could be purchased. And there's, you know, generally a premium price demanded for those.
Well, since I live on a farm, we don't eat many fish, say. We eat mostly beef and eggs. So, but, you know, our family farm has been in business down in Heartland for about 77 years. So our family goes back a long way. And certainly, family farmers are a small business. And in essence, even though you might have 15 or 20 employees, you're still a small business. And I think the township needs to support more of that organic growth from within. And so I'm in favor of this as well.
Go ahead.
I think when Larry was talking about brick-and-mortar, he wasn't necessarily, I saw a lot of comments and emails and things saying, you know, Buffalo Wild Wings and all that. I don't want that any more than anybody else. We've had other people inquiring about putting in a business and building a building that were local people. There was an idea about just an all-made-in-Michigan restaurant, all organic things. So it's not just holding a license for some big box, because I am really sick of Buffalo Wild Wings and Red Lobster and all that kind of stuff, too. And we do, and my family loves sushi. And they're all going to be there. But for me, it's just, I look at the people who have invested in all this infrastructure, that have built roads, and they bought water and sewer, and they have a lot of expense that they're paying with nothing being built. And they're saying you need house tops to build a building. You need buildings to bring people. So it's kind of a chicken-and-egg thing. So I kind of agree with Larry that, you know, I mean, I love this business. I think it's going to thrive because any restaurant in Heartland that's any good is, you all know, when you drive by it on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, you can't eat there. And so we go out to eat usually Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, when you can get a seat in Heartland. And we do support our local, and we don't eat out of Heartland very often. We eat here. So I think your business is going to be fantastic. But I just feel, I'm kind of leery about the census even bringing us another one. I don't see that we've brought in that many more houses since the last census to have more people. And it's, like I said, I know this business is going to be overwhelmingly packed at the same thing. And I wish you guys luck. But I just agree with Larry that I really would like to see it for somebody who has to also build a building and already has all these expenses underneath them. So.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? I believe we had a motion and a support for the resolution. Being so, have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Colliany?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Treasurer Horning?
No.
Clerk Chofeu?
No.
Trustee Germaine?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
I'd like to say one more thing. I have my reasons for voting the way I did. I support the decision of the board overall. I wish you the greatest of success. I know you will find, as evidenced by all these people here, that this is a great community to have a restaurant. I was there. They were very supportive. They're, it's just a friendly community. I'm sure you'll be very successful. And I hope when I come in there, you can teach me all about sushi. I don't know anything about it.
The menu looks fantastic. I mean, it's not just sushi. You guys really have.
So James, at this point, the process, they will, the letter of the local approver, the resolution, that gets forwarded to the state of Michigan?
Liquor Control Commission. And they know they've got more work to do with them.
Yeah. All right. Best of luck to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We still got stuff to do, so you guys can stick around. Okay, item number nine A is server computer replacements. James?
Thank you, Ms. Supervisor. Hopefully, there's a lot of information there. Hopefully, it's.
Maybe just take a, just a quick minute.
As all the sushi people were here.
Should have brought us some sushi to sample. Apparently, nobody cares about our computer equipment. Nobody cares about our computer equipment.
So everybody else in the room are students? So here's the good thing. We only got one more line item, and then you guys will be able to head out. So it shouldn't take, it shouldn't take too long. Or you can stick around if you'd like for a work session.
The work session is where we do all our really meat and potatoes of the meeting. So I mean, I would highly encourage you.
That can go till 11 o'clock, though.
No. Sorry, Bill. I just tried to encourage.
The Spartans tip off at 9:30, so we will be, hopefully. Okay, James, you have the floor.
A couple of issues. One, as you may have heard, Windows 7 will no longer be supported by Microsoft come the new year. That includes important security updates and support. As it so happens, we have a number of computers that are already aged, five, six, seven years old, which is very good. We were very intentional about purchasing technology equipment. It's just a little bit more horsepower so it'll last, you know, twice as long as usually expected. And we've gotten that life. So it's a good alignment that we needed to probably swap those out anyway before they start failing on us. And we can't put Windows 10 on those. So that being said, we have some CPUs to replace. Those are outlined in there. We also have to replace our email server. However, we found another solution in the way of with an Office 365 email server in the cloud. Not only is that more economical, that will help us with the issues we've been having, and more recently, in the last year, with losing that email server. So we look forward to having that. And the last piece is the Fast Search Server. That's a term, that's the name of the software by Microsoft. That's our LaserFISH, for lack of a better term. We had that years ago. That's our way of keeping track of all the documents, all electronic documents that we had saved on the server and being able to find them quickly for day-to-day operations, for FOE requests, that kind of a thing. All told, that's a, those costs are just shy of $44,000. Most of that is PEG-eligible. And because of the size of that, it's not on the consent agenda. It is a pretty routine purchase, all told. But happy to answer any questions the board may have.
James, I don't know if you mentioned it, the dollars to pay for this comes out of which fund?
Most of it is PEG. I think it's 60%. Did he say? Maybe more than that. Out of the $44,000, about $4,800 is general fund, and the rest is PEG.
And PEG money is?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the, from the cable franchise agreement with Comcast. It's a special revenue that can only be spent on equipment, capital expenses related to PEG-ness operations. And that includes things like putting together the agenda packets and all things related to the broadcast of this meeting and the programming on the cable channel.
Thank you. Any questions for James? Being non, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the budget amendments and the purchase of replacement technology up to $44,000.
Support.
Motion by trustee Germaine, second by trustee Harper. Any discussion? Being non, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Board reports this evening. We'll start with trustee Colliany.
I have no, nothing to report.
Trustee Germaine?
The final step in the construction of the hoop house is the getting the furnace operational and electricity to it. And with the assistance of our DPW director, we've been getting quotes for those activities. There, those are still things that will be paid for by the Hero Teen Center because it's directly, you know, applicable to their operations. So I just wanted to, what can you add that I didn't say? Perhaps we're hoping to have the services completed by December 1st?
Oh, absolutely. Thanks for the opportunity to speak on that. I've been working with the contractors. And right now is kind of all the trades, if you will, their crunch time to try and get all their year-end work in before the weather cracks. And we are, we are one of those last projects of the year. But the contractors are diligently working towards providing us with some fiscally responsible quotes. And we look to have that service projected to be completed beginning to mid-December at the latest. So our ultimate goal will be by the end of the year. I don't foresee any reason why we shouldn't be able to meet that deadline.
Yeah, I'm hoping you do because I was going to make a suggestion. We change our Christmas party to the hoop house. Maybe we should wait for another year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Harper?
I would just like to compliment the clerk and the treasurer on their willingness to speak their conscience in a vote that was a bit, you know, controversial, to go against the grain. And I think that just shows that the integrity of this, you know, this board, that they can, we can disagree on important issues and respect each other for that. And I just. can, we can disagree on important issues and respect each other for that, and I just wanted to compliment both of you.
And support everyone that's done.
Thank you. Trustee Petrucci?
I just want to report that there was an injury at the fire department about two weeks ago. We had, during a training session, they were working on the jaws of life on some farm equipment. The equipment slipped and the jaws of life closed on a hand, on one of the hands, one of the firefighters, about seventeen tons of pressure. And it didn't break any bones, but it really messed his hand up and they spent about nine hours at University of Michigan Hospital, and he's going to be out of work for a month or two, but he's okay, and I just wanted to report that to the board.
Thank you. Clerk Shofu?
I have no report.
Treasurer Horning?
Nothing this evening.
Just a quick thank you to everybody here who gave cards and flowers and were in attendance to my father's passing, it meant an awful lot to me, and it was, it was very touching to see the, just the outreach from this community. So, on behalf of my family, thank you very much for all those well wishes.
If there's nothing else at this point, we'll take a brief recess, and we have a special guest with us this eve, this evening. We've got David Mendel from Plantwise, who's going to be talking about an invasive species called Fragmites. And if you don't know what Fragmites is, it's becoming very dominant in a lot of our ditches, especially in southeast Michigan. It's a very, very aggressive invasive plant that can change a ecosystem. So we're looking forward to having him shed some light on that. So at this point, we'll take a brief recess and we'll go into our work session.
Any students want your documents signed, bring them up.
What am I signing?
We did it before.
Oh, summer tax collection?
Summer late.
Did somebody come in late? Yeah, that's for us, we get our three dollars, we collect them, and they put it in the summer instead of...